I'd like to call to order the work session on Monday, October 19th. The time is now 5:00 by our clock. By Wally's, it's 5:02 or 5:03, okay? Tonight's the first work session is a joint work session of the Goodyear City Council and welcoming the Planning and Zoning Committee. Love to see you here. As I look around the table, Councilman Stip is not going to be with us this evening. So, the rest of us are all here. So, as we've done a welcome, and you've all gone around and shook their hands tonight, and welcomed to the table. So, we're going to go to the first item. Well, first of all, let me announce your names so the public that's listening at home will hear this. The Planning and Zoning members in attendance tonight are Chairman Ryan Peters, Commissioner Kathleen Maloney, Commissioner Jason Kish, Commissioner Kathleen Short. I do want you to know that Commissioner Vicki Hamilton wanted to attend but could not this evening. Patrick Bray is on his honeymoon, so we would shoe him back home if he showed up, I tell you. And Commissioner Randy Barnes. So, we're going to a 3.1 item, and that's Proposed Amendments to the City of Goodyear Sign Ordinance, and to provide staff with the guidance on several policy considerations concerning the sign regulations within the city. Christopher Baker, Development Service Director; Steve Carecchi, Planner 3; Sarah Chilton, Assistant City Attorney, to present. Now, I've just said that out, but I've got, is that who's presenting tonight?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
No extra there, okay. You have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, and Planning Commission, thank you for entertaining us in this joint work session. This is an important evening as we move forward in revising and amending the city's sign ordinance. Before we begin tonight, I'd just like, as you mentioned, Mayor, Sarah Chilton, Assistant City Attorney, has been assisting us and our team as we move through understanding the new Supreme Court ruling and its implications in Goodyear. Steve Carecchi is a project manager on this project. As we move forward with you and the Planning Commission in this endeavor, you'll see us both coming back. But it's also important to realize that we also have economic development on our team as well. Obviously, sign regulation can impact the business community. We're cognizant of that, and they are a member of our effort. Robert Edo, we've been working with him in ECDEV. He is out of town today. Michelle Laurie is here and willing to answer any questions that you may have. So, I wanted you all to be aware that we are working with ECDEV on this process as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, as you all know from your staff report and the Yellow Paper and from previous discussions, the Supreme Court in the summer, early in summer, in June, I believe it was, issued a decision, Reed versus Gilbert, that really fundamentally changed sign regulation throughout the country, by case, through their decision. And Goodyear now finds itself in a position of having to amend its sign ordinances. Now, it's important to realize that Goodyear is in the same boat as most other jurisdictions in the country. We're not unique in this situation, and we're evaluating it, and really what our thrust is, is to become content neutral, to handle and regulate signage irrespective of what the message is on the sign. And this has really big implications for Goodyear's sign ordinance, for example, real estate signs. You have to look at a sign to know that it's real estate. You have to read it. So, we now have to change the way that we discuss real estate signs. Or garage sale signs. You have to read the sign to notice it's telling you garage sale. So, we have to change the manner in which we're thinking about that. So, the Supreme Court, by virtue of its ruling, indicated the fact that we can still, that municipalities throughout the country can still handle and regulate signs with, by their size, their placement, their construction type, the lighting, all those general things, but we have to be content neutral. So, what we're, that's what, fundamentally what we're embarking on is rewriting the ordinance to become a content-neutral ordinance. And it poses many different challenges that Steve is going to highlight for you tonight. And we really want to have discussion. We're not going to do a whole lot of talking. We're going to ask some questions and some facilitation with you, because we want your input before we start rewriting the ordinance. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Commission members. We did put a schedule together, the sign amendment process that Christopher just spoke of. We did put a schedule together, and we'd like to just go over that with you. And that is this slide here. First two items, we will have accomplished after tonight. We plan to spend the next few months working on the sign code, amending it, looking at what we need to do once we get commission, direction from the Council and Commission.
Steve, Joe has a question.
Hi, Steve. Just, I guess you lost me on one point. I'm trying to picture my content-neutral. What is, from a legal lawyer's standpoint, what does that mean? We're drawing pictures on signs now, or what?
Well, the court basically looked at the temporary sign ordinance in Gilbert, and they had all kinds of classifications. And so, if you were a garage sale sign, you could be up for three days. If you were a real estate sign, it had all these different regulations. And what the court said is, if you have to read the sign to understand how it's to be regulated, so to say, oh, you're a violation of the sign code because you're a garage sale sign, and you're up 10 days. So, they basically said, if you have to read the content of the sign, then that becomes a content-based regulation, and you're subject to strict scrutiny under the First Amendment. It really did fundamentally change.
It doesn't answer his question, because really what he's looking at, he wants to look at the signs. So, if it's a real estate sign, does it have to have certain things on it?
We cannot tell them what content we can do. So, we can say that, we can, we can regulate the quality of the signs, so we can require signs of a certain nature. For instance, I'll give you an example, and we'll talk about it later, but it's a perfect example. Council really is interested in having "coming soon" signs for future development. We can no longer require that, because it's directing, expressly directing what kind of content you can have on a sign. Now, and Steve will get into it, but it's an easy example, so I'm kind of jumping the gun. But you could have regulations that say, on any piece of vacant land in the city, you could have signs that meet these criteria. They have to be spaced, they can be of this size, and you can't tell them what has to be on there. You're assuming they'll put "coming soon," you know, but, or for future development, but you cannot tell them that that's what you want on that sign.
Just a follow-up. How does that deal with specific language? If it's content-neutral and it's First Amendment, you can't regulate what they put on there. How about if it's offensive? Is that something that you still have some authority over? If there's something offensive of the way it's written on that sign?
Well, technically, not under the sign ordinance. We're just talking about the sign ordinance. There would be other ordinances, you know, that we, if we don't have in place, I guess we would have to put in place if somebody did that. I mean, remember, we're working with businesses and communities that want to have, want to advertise their businesses. So, you know, I don't see that as much of a risk, although you always have that risk with, say, residential people, residences where they put a sign up, and, you know, and they could say what they want on that sign.
Okay. No, I'm just saying for shock value, to get somebody's attention, you might have something, if it's contract, content-neutral, doing that, just to grab attention to the place or whatever. I'm just...
Sure. And, you know, it's going to be hard-pressed, because the First Amendment allows for a lot of, you know, a lot of leeway. But the assumption is, is that, you know, we're mostly regulating signs along, in the business community, in industrial areas and commercial areas. So, the assumption is, is that they'll use it to advertise their businesses and not to slam everybody else.
No, I'm just trying to get around that contract-neutral piece, that's all.
Joanne?
Well, I think you're going to go into it. So, really, we're getting back into the, when we were allowing for model homes to have their signage on the weekends, you know, allowing for the little pirate signs, you know, that's what we're talking about, things like that, the temporaries that we were making adjustments for to help
Yes.
the real estate market and things like that.
Yes, and that is, we're expecting that that will be
That will be initial.
the topic that will generate substantial comment.
Understood.
Go ahead, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Jason?
I just, I read up on the case as well, and it seems that the crux of the case had to do with a church that was being unfairly targeted in regards to putting up their signs, and their religious event signs were only allowed to be put up for between 1 and 12 hours, as opposed to an ideological sign, which had an unlimited display time. And also, certain signs had different size requirements. Now, I don't know what our current signage rule is, but if we do have a particular ruling place where we have duration requirements on our signs, I think that is opening us up for a particular issue.
Yes, and we do. We do. Yes, and yes, and yes.
Steve?
Go ahead, Steve.
Mayor, Council, Commission members, we do plan to spend the next few months. It is a significant amendment, so we do envision it'll take some time. We also plan public outreach. That's where economic development will greatly assist us, reaching out to the business community. We'd like to get their opinions, especially before the holiday shopping center. So, we're looking at sometime early November, trying to get before them. We plan to have some business open houses, and also send out information to our residents as well. The ultimate plan is maybe first quarter 2016. We'll bring something back before the Commission and Council let you review it, and hopefully we'll adopt it sometime in March. But that is the overall outline. In looking at our code, we did recognize there were several areas that needed amendments. And in looking at that, we came up with a lot of questions. And as Christopher said, we wanted to bring those before you tonight, to get your direction. And these are some to date that we've identified that we could use your direction on tonight. I was hinted at that temporary signs, that will probably generate some discussion tonight. What are temporary signs? I do have some pictures here I can put up on Elmo, just to go through a few quick ones. A-frame sign.
It looks that way, doesn't it?
Very content neutral.
It is content-neutral. This one, I did try to remove what they were advertising, and that is kind of what we're looking at, that we can regulate the sign without knowing what's on it. So, our regulations would say, this is an A-frame sign, it's calling it out by the characteristics, the physical characteristics of the sign, versus trying to identify that it's either a for-sale sign, coming soon. Without looking at it, we know what it is.
It's going to show.
And these are just several other categories of temporary signs. And as you'll notice, a lot of these signs are the signs that go within city right-of-way.
And these are the ones the small businesses always want to have, especially the ones that are deep in a shopping center. And they do draw attention, and that's, so I can, I can understand. Kathleen, I'm sorry, I was looking at the picture.
Just a question. Usually, consider political signs that are put up for the duration, you know, before an election, through an election, as a temporary sign, often in right-of-ways, frequently pretty strong desire that they disappear when an election is over. How do you, how do we be content-neutral about signs like that?
Well, there's a state statute that prohibits the city from enforcing its sign code and removing, well, from removing the political signs from the right-of-way during a given period of time. There's a certain exceptions, if it creates a safety hazard, but it has been problematic. We're not sure that that state statute will survive the Reed versus Gilbert, because it created specific signs that are allowed within the right-of-way. But right now, when that, when that statute came out, we did not amend our sign code to allow, to specifically allow it. We don't enforce it because of the state statute, but we never, we were not one of the cities who specifically addressed political signs and said, oh, yes, you can have signs in the right-of-way. Currently, there's only a couple types of signs that are allowed in our right-of-way and city right-of-way. So, we didn't fall into that trap. We said, we may not be able to enforce it, but the general consensus is, is that that statute is probably, won't sustain a First Amendment challenge, so...
Of course, political signs are not always stuck in the right-of-way. Sometimes they're all over the place with or without permission. But I guess my question really was more aimed at, is there any way that we can regulate the removal of those signs post-election?
Well, that would require a specific regulation of political signs, which would be content-based. So, what we're looking to is to try to craft changes to the ordinances that allow us to regulate physical characteristics of signs. So, you may have, and, you know, and that's what we're going to be asking for feedback from the Commission and from the Council, is what is it that we want to allow, either on private property, or if we're considering changes within the right-of-way? What kind of temporary signs? Because that we can do. And so, we can say, you can have a political sign, but it needs to meet this criteria, and it has to look like this. You know, you can have any sign, so it could be political or otherwise. And, you know, one of the timeframes, the problem is, you're all in or you're all out. So, you, you know, you cannot, you cannot change what it is, you know? And the timeframe is going to be very tricky to manage, because the timeframes that you have have to apply to all the same, you know, across the board for the same types of signs. So, that's one of the issues that we're going to be talking about right now when we talk about temporary signs.
Can the statutes tell us we have 10 days after the election to get our signs down, or we can find? And our code compliance is supposed to go around and pick the signs up and notify the candidates and get them out of there?
I understand that. I'm just wondering what the future holds.
Oh, well, whatever.
In terms of what we can do and can't do.
Well, once the state law tells us, we, you know, I don't think, I don't know what we're going to do.
Sherry?
I don't think any realized how much work it's going to deal with changing this from that one Gilbert case, because when it came out, I was like, well, what's Gilbert doing? And when I look at that sign up there, the nail salon sign, that's exactly the same kind of signs we use in our campaign. And when we talk about the bandit signs, where we list two or three, I know not so much for the city campaigns, but we see the legislative campaigns, like up and down the road to Pebble Creek, there was like probably one every two feet of those signs with the same candidates. So, if we can't say you can, if we're not going to not permit it for candidates, then that means that we have to permit it, I guess, for everyone, is what, I'm seeing this as as broad as possible, so that everything is going to be allowed, more or less. Is that kind of where we're going? That's kind of what it looks like from everything in here?
Well, that, that would be what we are, you know, what you'd have to do to be consistent. So, the fact that you might have to prohibit more signs than you're willing to live with, or impose timeframes, you know, shorter timeframes, one of the things we're thinking is that basically every sign has to be permitted, so that you, you know, if we have timeframes that you can regulate, oh, has to go. You can regulate the quality of the signs, you could require higher-quality signs, but yeah, that's it. You know, I mean, if you have political signs, you got to have the nail sign.
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Aren't these signs regulated by the state? They can't be up here now.
No, those can, well, these right here are probably not, would not be allowed per the code right now. But we do have, every temporary sign has a time limit to it.
So, we categorize those types of signs, you know, they're not, in those local signs that we hear so much complaints about the, you know, the signs around the city, and they'd be held the same constraints as everybody else. So, it's actually, it could be an opportunity as well, you know, that can't be quite so used today, or not assigned trash.
If you can go back to the presentation for us, instead of Elmo. Thank you.
So, we've already started the discussion on the temporary signs, and political signs are one of them. We went through some of the examples of what the temporary signs are, and we do treat several, we have several categories of temporary signs, and we do treat each differently, such as Gilbert did. What we're looking for tonight is direction on, how should we go, move forward with temporary signs in the city of Goodyear? Do we want to have signs per business? Do we want to have more permanent-type signs? Do we want to have a certain time limit that's uniform? The constraints we're working with from the Reed case is, we need to have uniform treatment, we need to have, we need to be consistent in our regulations, we need to reduce the exceptions to our sign code. So, those are the constraints we're trying to work with, and temporary signs are very important to our business community, so we want to make sure we do the right thing. And thus, the reason we're bringing the four council and commission tonight.
I have a question. You know, I know that the, I think it's the Checker's Garage, is it? You know, he sits back off of Litchfield, and he has had, you know, many times complained somewhat, because people don't know he's back there. And he has an A-frame, I think, that we allowed him to do, that he pulls out now and then. So, it's just going to be, I think this is really hard to divide this up and create what we're going to do, because whatever we do, the people that can't do it now know the freedom of complaints and so forth, and so, this is pretty monumental. It's almost like we need a whiteboard.
We need a sign.
Need one of your whiteboards. Yes, Joanne?
Well, I certainly understand the issue of signage. And I, and I think that, as I, as I look at how our city's developed over the years, I sit in a center right now that every, every pad was allowed their own individual sign in front of their business. You know, Burger King, actually, Checkarato even got one out there, it was O'Reilly's now, but they all had their own individual. There was no monument sign for that center. As years continued and we developed tomorrow, the sign regulations were changing. And I, and I think that, you know, those businesses that put those temporary signs out there are dying to be seen. Well, did we regulate ourselves so badly that we did not allow for enough wayfinding interior signage? Did we not, did we not allow for enough monument signs, outer core, for their, for their faces to be visible in a, in a nice-looking manner, rather than clutter and chaos? You know, so it's like, did we go, did we hit the limit too far to one side that we've caused for all these, you know, other signs to come out, which, you know, I'm sorry, I do not want our city to look like that. That's not what I wanted to, I have a standard of quality that I really visualize that's higher, and it's not a bunch of signage here, there, willy-nilly. That's my opinion. But I think that, as we go forward, part of the issue is that, as we're developing these large centers with multiple tenants, we need to make sure that if there's enough monument signs on their outer core that allows for the visibility of not just five anchors, you know, but we also have to, and there's 20 businesses within a center, you know, but we also have to say that inner signage, wayfinding, has to be able to have enough directions that everybody's being seen and visible. Then, they may not want to put out all those flags and all those, because I don't know what our formula was. I'm sorry, I don't recall, you know, for, for, say, the Walmart Center or the Roosevelt area, where we had a lot of people needing the A-frame signs, we didn't have enough directionals for them. Now, that may have been the developer's side, or did we regulate it so badly that that was our fault? So, I'm not sure which it is.
How about just explaining to the Council, when a company, when a shopping center or when it's going to be developed, the developer, he pays for that. So, how do we approach the developer if that, what we've been doing, okay, so that we know, because we know there are some areas that do not have enough signage, so...
Mayor, Council, the, the city's history of dealing with that over time has been in a shopping center situation, when there's three or more tenants, it's the, it's the comprehensive sign package methodology is which, which we bring to you that's approved, that's at the request of the, of the developer at that point in time. And so, that has been a mechanism that has been utilized widely in Goodyear for a number of years. And Steve, you want to elaborate additional on that?
Mayor, Council, Commission members, that, as Christopher said, that's historically what we've been doing, the comprehensive sign packages. We've usually had the centers that have the master developer, and then they have the pads, so they kind of control it, and they set the tone and the theme for the center. That's why you see the multi-tenant monuments typically. Later, you find that those inline shops and such, then, they would like signage, but there was never any measure taken for their signs. And thus, you see what you get in terms of the less, they're not as expensive, those signs, that the bandit signs that can go out and be put in the right-of-way. So, historically, we've generally focused on the larger tenants through the city. Some of the ideas, as a staff, we've been working on is, and we'll touch on it later, is the comprehensive sign packages, promoting more signage upfront, instead of everybody having to come in and have their pick-and-chose, let's have more uniform, maybe our signs are too small, maybe we don't allow enough of them. What have we done in the past? What has the Commission and Council regularly approved? Maybe we need to bring our standards up to that, reduce our reliance on comprehensive sign packages. Part of that is also looking at the directional signs, internal to a development, pointing, here's, here's several different shops. If it's internal to development and done well, then there's really not a concern from an aesthetic standpoint or clutter standpoint. So, those are some of the ideas we're, we've been looking at, and we wanted to put those forth tonight and see what kind of thoughts Commission and Council have.
We have to put in the proper perspective, because since I've been on the Council in 2005, the Council's not been for signs, okay? Pure and simple. It's been discussion, it's been limited, it's been concern. So, we are where we are because of the Councils. And I, you know, so we, we can't put it on, you know, what our team's been doing in community development. It isn't. It's exactly what we've, the Councils since 2005, the majority have not particularly liked signs. And so, you know, so here we are. So, go ahead, let's, Joey, you had one more?
First of all, just to piggyback on, on the mayor there, is, for me, I think it's important from a business standpoint, and again, going to rely on some of the feedback that you're going to ask, is, I'm a fan of signs if done right, okay? Because you go up Roosevelt, you know, I've been in there trying to find some of those places at times, and good luck, okay? Turn off Roosevelt, you have a bunch of shops there just to the left, have no idea what's in there until you go around and try to drive through the whole place to figure out what's inside there. The question I have, and I like the idea of, you know, when we start building these shopping centers, come up with comprehensive, maybe inside to point them to the direction, but from the ruling, when you get into temporary, because we've got a lot of, I guess, shopping centers that aren't at that place right now. And you can't discriminate by context, right? All right? So, if you have a temporary sign, and you're trying to do something that you had mentioned, where you have a strategy of taking care of the outside monument signs and some inside as we go forward, what's to prevent them from putting temporary signs in there, up there, as opposed to dealing with the older parts of town, or the parts that already have a shopping center in, where you want to find ways of directing traffic to the particular businesses? I think that's going to be kind of the biggest challenge. You know, time, do you regulate? I know you can't go by content, but can you regulate the quality of the sign itself, as far as what the sign looks like? Time period, then when you get into time period, I look at the political. Is it a First Amendment issue that you run across on some of those issues? So, you've got so many things that you're going to deal with just on this one ruling. How do you get it so it's consistent throughout the city while still promoting a nice environment which grows business? That, I think, is the biggest challenge you have facing you, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sherry, Sherry's next. Sherry? And then, go ahead, Sherry.
Okay. Yeah, we have really had problems with signs. They're too small, what we've had, and I was for the digital signs, I was for the monument signs, because we have shopping centers here that you guys know, that you, the Walmart, the Roosevelt, that you're driving through and businesses fail, fail, fail. But when I look at the case and I look at what we have here, although I do agree, especially for the larger elections, the city and state elections, some of those signs seem to be up forever, and those don't get taken down as readily, because those people don't live in the city. I know if I get one, someone will say, I picked up your sign that fell down and brought it, brought it over to you and everything. But I think then we go back to the same problem of the political speech, like what was happening in the Gilbert case, as opposed to the content-neutral-based case, that if we do put any type of timeframes on that, I mean, we either have to have the same timeframes for everybody or no timeframes. And I don't think with the state law, then a candidate's going to sue us if we put it, and it's going to be probably a statewide candidate or someone, will sue our city if we try to put a time, manner, place restriction on that, as opposed to the bandit signs. So, one thing from the case, if a So one thing from the case, if a sign has deteriorated, can we control it that way? Because if we can't say you can only be up for so long without getting ourselves in another sticky situation, is there any way if we see signs that are falling apart or bent or something that if they don't, that those would have to be removed? Could we add something like care?
There is, you know, you certainly can regulate the quality of the signs, but again, you know, you have to look at whatever you have for one, you have to have for all. So you either have a very long period for every sign and you have the same type of signage available, you know, you can have a sign that's so large, you know, and it can stay up, but you can regulate the deterioration. For instance, if council liked the, what are they, the sale signs? You know, the signs that look like a sale? If you, the wind sale, if you like the wind sale signs, you know, you could, you know, regulate that as a, based on the characteristics and regulate how long those types of things could be up and then you'd have the ability to, a requirement that they be well maintained, that they not be frayed, that, you know, and so if there were problems with how attractive they were. The problem is, is that if you get into all of these political signs, you're going to get into all of the signs for everybody else who wants to advertise whatever they want to advertise and then you're kind of stuck with it. So again, unfortunately, because of what the court did in Reed, you can't say these deserve more protection. And the court specifically said is, why are you protecting political signs? They create the same sort of clutter as every other sign that you have, which is kind of odd since it was, you know, fundamentally a free speech, the most protected speech you would think, but they didn't go that way. They didn't look at those signs as any different than other signs that are being regulated. So that's the problem that we are facing and so we have the opportunity to say, okay, we don't mind the sandwich boards, but they have to be in during, you know, only be out during business hours and removed every day. I don't care what they say, you know, but they're not left out overnight, they have to be clean and well maintained if they're ratty and look bad, you know, but then everybody's going to be wanting to do it, you know, so, you know, how do you have spacing requirements? Then, you know, what's fair? First come, first served? How do we regulate that? Because unless we require permits for everybody, how do you know which one's the first in? So there is, there is just all kinds of problems with what, you know, what the court did. And even, and Steve mentioned that we're trying to get away from the comprehensive sign package and kind of look to see what we regularly approve so that we can expand what's available. But even if that happens, we have some developments where the signage is controlled by the property owner and they won't put up a sign. So, you know, there's only so much that we as a city can do. If you bought in and you've got a developer who's not willing to put into a sign, I think Steve and Christopher both mentioned the inline shops, you know, usually it's the bigger tenants that are the draw and the inline shops draw off of those, but there's no specific signage and they're probably not going to pay to be included in a monument sign, you know, so they like those tiny little signs. And unfortunately, we're looking to you to say, what would you be willing to accept knowing that you're all in or you're all out, that, you know, whatever you do is across the board? And so, you know, we're trying to say, here's kind of how you can regulate it by quality, characteristics of the signs, but not the content. And unfortunately, it's a really difficult, difficult issue and that's what we're kind of looking for guidance for.
Joanne?
You know, I know, I've been speaking, I'll let Wally go first and then I can.
I've got three things that I would like to say. Number one, I remember coming on council and having a proposal come before council on a monument sign and we limited how big the monument sign was. We would not let them put 15 people or, so we as a council, we as a city have limited the size of the sign, the, how many they are, and then once the signs are done, on some of the small shopping centers, if I recall correctly, whoever owns the sign wanted an exorbitant amount of money to put that little business's name on that sign and they could not afford it. And, or they came in later and the sign didn't have a space for them or something. So my hope is that this city does not make this ordinance so difficult, it cannot be interpreted easily, because we have a tendency to overthink everything here in Goodyear, everything. And I don't know what other cities are doing, but I am going to do my homework with all of my fellow council members that I know across the West Valley to find out what the other cities are doing as well. But I know we need to be fair, we have to be within the perimeters of the law, but let's try not make it any more difficult than it is, if that's possible.
I don't think you can. I think we've hit the, Joanne, are you ready?
Well, I appreciate the discussion and I think that over the years, we did get limiting. And, you know, it's funny because we also didn't have small businesses that were putting all those signs out there. I mean, certainly when the recession hit, it really hit hard. People are, find me, find me, and, you know, bless their hearts, they needed it and I want to help them the best possible way and it is true. Those monument signs, it's expensive and, you know, most of the anchors are the only ones that can afford to put their names out on the main monument and it's unfortunate. And so that's why I really believe that there's got to be better wayfinding from the developer and, you know, truly, it's almost a sales pitch by economic development by saying, you know what, as you're planning this out, I think we should still see those sign packages because then in a way we can be proactive and say, you know what, you would be better off if you had some more wayfinding signage for your small businesses in here because you know what, if you don't put good direction for these people, do you realize your development here is going to have a bunch of little flag signs and this and that all over the place? Is that what you want your development to look like? I mean, you know, kind of let them realize what the scenario is going to be down the line if they don't fork up the money to build those signs. Now granted, they will put up the monument signs, but that individual business that wants to pay for their placard, it's not cheap, it's not. And so, you know, I'm trying to keep my hats separate right now, but I know what it costs and so it's not.
Joe?
I assume there's other cities in the same boat.
Yeah.
So it would be helpful, I think, at least to me, it would be helpful to piggyback on what Wally was talking about is to see what, how the others are addressing, addressing this issue. I think would be helpful, you know, no sense reinventing the wheel, you know, maybe multiple heads are better than one individual head trying to figure this question out. But from my perspective, I think two key things, fear, fair, number one, and we don't want the clutter and then two, which incentivizes business to get their customers to their shop, okay? Now again, you know, I want signs all over the place that has 50 pointing in the one direction, but the same token, you know, I like to use the example of Roosevelt. I don't know how half of them stay in business because you can't find any of them in there, you know? So we've got to figure out a way where it's not clutter, but the same token allows the businesses to get the advertising so you can find a way to their shop.
Kathleen, did you put your finger up?
Well, I did have a couple of questions. I'm kind of interested in your thought process about, I like the idea of the monument signs and maybe part of the package could be that anybody that does have a business in the Roosevelt area or down in Pebble Creek Parkway, that part of their cost have to be the monument package. But then I say to myself, you know, that's not fair for some little nail salon that has six seats in it, you know, so that you don't have that clutter because looking at this, I say to myself, wow, I mean, you know.
I have a question on the, you know, the little signs that we took over, remember they were for communities, the oval ones?
Right.
That, you know, and so we had decided that could we use those in a lot of businesses and get on one? Is there that available to do it once more where the city produces some of those signs and then would allow these small businesses?
One of the exceptions that you had in the Reed case where the court was saying that, you know, governmental signs, you know, were kind of outside the scope of this because of our governmental functions. And so to the extent we're looking at these as directional signs, arguably that they would be okay under Reed and so, but I think there's a cost associated with that. I think the, what are those called, Steve?
The kiosk.
The kiosk.
If you can go to Elmo.
Oh, sorry. So those are the kiosks that we have?
That's them, right there.
Right. And so I think those are available to anybody who wants to get on there, so you could have smaller businesses that, but I don't know what the costs are, I don't remember it being terribly cost prohibitive.
They used to be for all our communities for directional signs and then we salvaged a bunch of them and transferred them into, using it for advertisement.
Right, but if you wanted to buy more of those that were owned by us, I think we bought those and I think we own them under that contract, I'd have to look at that contract. But they do the advertising and they put up the panels. But I thought those were our signs, were they? Yeah, they're our signs. So if you wanted to expand that program, we'd have to put some money into expanding the signs or expanding, you know, our inventory.
Well, it certainly would do it for some of those smaller shopping centers, you know, and the bigger shopping centers, it's always hard to tell the developer what they have to do with their signs. I think that's going to be a big challenge.
And that is one thing I was going to point out, we really can't direct private property owners.
Oh, it's just proactively saying, you know.
Private property owners. And the thing with the comprehensive sign package is, you know, certainly you can bring them, but if they meet the code requirements, you won't have any discretion, but if you want to talk to them and say you're entitled to more signage if you want, certainly that is something that you could do, you know, if it's allowed under the code, but if they're meeting the code, the thought was there'd be no reason to bring it because we've already identified code provisions.
Go ahead.
So in regards to, if you can go back to the presentation, please, in regards to temporary signage, what we as the team are proposing essentially is to replace these various categories of signs that we have, real estate, ideological, political, and really work toward categories of signs such as banner signs or sandwich signs, monument signs and move in that direction. And if I heard what the council and the commission's input was, is that you're concerned about the historical limiting of signage in Goodyear and you are open to more flexibility and more and higher quality signage, is that a fair statement?
Well, it is and not too many, I have to, Cheryl Lynn's been wanting to talk, go ahead, Cheryl Lynn.
I just had a couple of comments. One thing is not only do we want to be careful, especially the small business, but the economics of it is an issue. The signs we were talking about, the city owned, it might not have been expensive for a developer, but it was expensive for a, I had looked into it for the chamber and it was way too costly. So it's kind of relative. That's kind of relative. And I think one of the waste signs, you know, we have one, a small business on a straight at Parkway, that the interior signage is so bad that I literally drove around in that strip for about 30 minutes.
Doggy sign, is it?
No, I recognize a dog. No, it was a stitch place and I finally decided where it was based on something that was painted on the window, but nowhere did it indicate that it was a, and I found that disturbing. And then I went inside, I did eventually go inside and found it was very disturbing to the owner of that shop as well. But I think we just need to be obviously consistent, but I think we need to be cost sensitive as well. I mean, and I just wonder how many shops you can put on a monument sign that can be seen as people are driving down the street?
It's pretty, those little ones, if they're, they use the boulder letters and don't add too much to it. It is, I mean, you're looking for, you know, we can't do everything at one time, so if we're going to do what I call a quicker fix for these small businesses, that was the whole idea of bringing those signs and letting them put on because it would do that. So, but the other thing that we might want to think about is, I know we have rules on the size of sign on a building. We have rules on a color of sign on the building and I've often expressed that some of these buildings that are in these squares, we make them put sandy color to match the walls and so you can't see the signs when you go by. So I think it entails that if we're going to do this, we need to be looking at that too, in good taste, but something people can see and help them out. But I do think, I feel, that if we want to continue to have the number of businesses and successful, we might want to make somewhat of an investment in this. And I don't know what, how much it would be and you certainly would have to present it to us, but I would like to know what something like, it doesn't have to be like the sign we just showed, but what that would cost us and do a shared, shared cost with the business. So I don't know if that's possible and I don't know what the cost is, but I think that we have to look into something like it. Cheryl Lynn, you have one more?
Well, yeah, and I had, just had one more comment and that is, I think the earlier we get the businesses involved in this process, I don't want to take them, a package that looks like we've considered a done deal, I think we need to get them involved. I have not been, I've been out of the business world now for about two years.
You're right back in it now.
Thank you. For about two years and it's very fluid and it's very fast. And so I just think we need to be talking to the business community as quickly as we can to let them know how important their needs are to us as we're developing this because we want to do a good job.
Let's get their ideas also.
Yeah, yeah.
Sherri?
I just had a quick question because I like the idea of getting more of those and at least seeing what the cost is, if it's too cost prohibitive, that might be a thing. But just from following the letter of the rules of the case, let's say we do one of those signs and I'm Representative X who represents District 13 and I want to put, because these signs are available, can we prohibit political signs from going on that? Would that be permissible under the case or would we find ourselves in the reverse situation?
Well, the whole reason that those particular, the kiosk signs would be allowed is that they're directional in nature. So it's, you know, it's, and that's probably why you could probably get away, even though it's content-based, allowing directional signs on the premises, one of the things that we've been looking at is directional signs in terms of directing truck traffic away from where you have pedestrians and then the general public coming onto a site. So there are some limited exceptions. Again, the Reed case isn't the end-all be-all, I mean, I think that you're going to see a lot of fallout. I did want to respond to Councilmember Pizzillo's comment about looking to what other cities have done. The League was trying to do their own ordinance and their first draft came back and I'm like, it's all content-based. So it's very funny, they've gone through a couple more reiterations, but there's, we've looked at Mesa's, Mesa just has sign pictures. You have a sign that looks like this, you can, you know, and it has these dimensions and you can put this on your property. So we've looked at, you know, some of that and I think that, you know, back to the comprehensive sign package, we just need to make sure that there's uniformity in how we're treating everybody and that was the whole point. And one of the things that Steve is doing at the Development Services is they're undertaking a review of how we've deviated so that we can put together something that, you know, okay, we're regularly allowing this, let's look at our standards and make it accessible to everybody and it'll be based more on square footage, building percentages, that sort of thing. But, you know, we've considered all of these different, we've talked about all of the different suggestions you've had in terms of the height and stuff like that, but the real issue that we're looking at right now is these temporary signs, what do you want to do? Like where you had that Chef Benno or the nail sign and some other sign, you know, those are the signs that are going to be the most problematic for us to regulate, you know, and then are you willing to consider nicer quality temporary signs? So that's what we're really looking for, some direction. I know it's really frustrating, it's been frustrating for us, it's like, you know, what do you do? You know, what are you going to allow? You know, what are you going to allow? How are you going to regulate it? Because how do you, you know, you could put distance to avoid the clutter. You could put distance requirements. But then how, you know, it's going to require permits for every sign because you got to get them out so somebody else can come in and have an opportunity in that same development. So you've got all these issues to kind of look at, you know, unless you're okay with those pictures, you know, with some of the clutter that you see, with the clutter of the political signs that you see at the, you know, around elections.
Wally?
We've had several businesses go out of business because they have not been seen. And I remember the hot dog place over by the printing place in the same shopping center that Augie's is in because it's in the center of the shopping center and you cannot see it from Australia Parkway, you cannot see it from Roosevelt. So they would be the ideal candidate to put something out at the street to get people to come in. But I just want us to, as a council, if we are going to involve the public, we have to be open to their ideas and their suggestions. We have to have an open mind. We may not like signs and we may not want clutter, but if we're going to talk to our business people and they're going to come back with their suggestions, we need to consider it very thoughtfully. And not just because we don't want signs, say no, because it's their livelihood that we are going to be regulating. And in the long run, it's the city's revenue that is going to be affected if these businesses are not able to get customers to where they are. And for some reason, our city has many shopping centers that have buildings in the middle and in the back and in the side and not really on the street. So unless you really go into the shopping center, you don't know what's there. And you can't even see numbers of buildings. You don't even know what the address is because the numbers are not visible if there's not a monument sign. So I just think this gives us an opportunity now to take a really good look at our whole package and figure out where we're going to help the businesses and we want people to come to Goodyear.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, as we explore this, I say this as somebody who doesn't like sign pollution, but at the same time, I do want us to be more friendly to the business community and, you know, helping people get to their establishments. But my question is more of a code compliance question. Do we, how big of a problem is this? Are we picking up signs every day? Are we, currently are people just out there with all these wildcat signs? I mean, is this something that is just a big issue for the city every single day or businesses largely complying with their sign codes? Or, you know, what's going on with that?
To answer your question, Chairman Peters, we do pick up signs just about every day.
Okay.
It varies depending on the time of year, obviously, and, you know, closer to the weekends, some of those go out more frequently than others. But we pick them up every day.
I close my eyes sometimes when I pass them.
Okay, because I was just curious because that doesn't feel like we're polluted.
Yeah, I do. There are some of them, I put them out and, you know, they're not bad looking and I understand why they're there. And so I have to say I look away and drive back. And so I leave it up to code to find out. Now, the ones that are really aggressive and do not look nice, of course, I think all of us has reported them, but I think everybody around this table has said and always have felt like the businesses are here to make a livelihood. And if you think we had 75 businesses, new businesses this year so far? Seventy-five. Now, those people aren't all on the road, you know, on Litchfield or on where you can identify them. So definitely. Did you have some, Joanne?
Well, this is, you know, a difficult, difficult conversation. And, you know, I've thought about, I think, you know, we had conversation about, well, older parts of town, they have less signage and other, you know, dealing with that, you know, and I know, Steve, you're about to hit on the districting issue. You know, does it, does it help if you're to say, okay, you can have a certain kind of signage in this district? Well, if you have historic Goodyear, can you have a little more lenient ideas on signage in that area? You know, I mean, then does that cause even more problems? I think that also with the temporary signs and especially going back to this case, the whole reason why we're here tonight, is that there's temporary signs all over the city that I swear have been up for six months to a year. And I've just turned my head and I've said nothing. And you know what? They could, there's other businesses that have had their signs pulled that could truly, you know, argue the fact that, well, how come so-and-so's had theirs up for X amount of time? And so it is difficult. It is, and unless, back to Sarah, your point, unless everybody gets a permit and you say, okay, banner signs, banner doesn't have to be grand opening, doesn't have to be sale, it doesn't have, you know, it's not content. So if it's just banner sign, back to category, you're allowed to have a banner sign up for, you know, 30 days. If it's a political sign, what is it? You're allowed to have it up for three months. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just coming up with ideas. But, you know, back to category specific, I guess, back to district specific, I suppose. But, you know, the, I remember back when the mall was in front of us for their pylons and they wanted three pylons out there on the freeway. And the discussion was you can have two. And then I said, you know what? Bring up a third and put all those small businesses inside your mall that don't get that anchors point of view out there and then you can have my third vote, you know, for the, for the pylon. You know, we've tried to be creative over the years, but this type of situation now, it's almost too, it's going to take a lot of creativity to make it right.
Well, we fought those signs and there were people, again, that fought those signs that did not like signs. And so, like I said, you can put them up on, down the freeway. I don't care. Just advertise. Catherine?
Joanne just brought up a question that's been bothering me or I've been wondering about or maybe enticed by. But I assume that a sign is either temporary or permanent, but I'm not at all clear on how we're defining those two categories or if in fact maybe there are other categories too. So I guess my basic question is how, how have we defined temporary signs as opposed to non-temporary signs? And is that definition likely to change with these amendments? And if so, maybe how?
The ordinance does address, it does define temporary and permanent signs. And as you can imagine, the temporary sign is described as, you know, a non-permanent structure. So the temporary signs are the ones we were looking at on Elmo.
Understood that, but there's got to be something in addition to just saying a temporary sign is a non-permanent sign, doesn't there?
Well, we address, we have the several categories for the temporary signs and calling them out by their content, that's what we're trying to get away from.
Understood that, but are temporary signs going to be signs that are left up under six months? Or temporary signs going to be signs that aren't permanently attached to a building? Or how are we going to make that differentiation? Because that's going to have a huge impact on where you go with this.
And that is the question we are wrestling with as a staff tonight. That is the unknown at this point in terms of, that's where we see a lot of our work coming is how are we going to address the temporary signs? How long? Where? What material? Knowing that the material matters to cost. And we're getting some direction tonight, but that is the big question for us as the staff. How are we going to be fair?
Commissioner Short, to answer a question a little bit further, there's some sign ordinances around the country that define this by a permanent sign is constructed and as opposed to just like installed, like inserted into the ground or staked or placed on the ground. That way there's a foundation, things of that nature as a permanent sign, something that's constructed. So as Steve mentioned, we're looking at those and there'll be some definition changes as part of the ordinance effort coming back before you.
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, few questions. Are we holding people accountable for the signs we have right now that are breaking ordinance? Are we collecting these fines? Because I'm a teacher, whenever I make a new rule, I have to then hold my students accountable for that rule. And typically there's a whole lot of anger that goes along with that. And then the last question is how long do we have seriously before we put ourselves in a bad situation? I know you guys have been working on this now, but are we going to put ourselves in a situation where we could be, you know, sued in regards to holding these people accountable as opposed to not holding these people accountable? That's, my worry is that we put ourselves in a crosshairs.
You can get sued for unequal enforcement, you know. So yes, that is, that is a risk if we're not uniformly enforcing the sign code. My understanding is that we are picking up the bandit signs that are in violation of code, but, you know, we have, we have limited code enforcement officers and, you know, they kind of just pop up and are out there. And so I don't know how much time they devote just to driving around, picking up bandit signs. But yes, you're, you're right. We have, we are at risk for unequal enforcement. And in terms of how long does it, do we have until we need to get a new sign ordinance in place? Well, right now, we could have a challenge that our sign ordinance violates the First Amendment, similar to what Gilbert had. Getting back to Commissioner Short's question, we define temporary in terms of the nature of the signs. So if it was for a garage sale or if it was for a special event or if it was a real estate sign, because of the, based on the content of the sign and what was being advertised, that's how we defined what was temporary, which is why we are moving towards looking at defining temporary and permanent by the characteristics of the signs as something that's intended to be permanent, has a foundation, cannot be easily removed. So that's what we're looking at and that's a change that we're, we're going to be making as a result of the change to the sign ordinance. But, you know, the sooner we can get through this, the better in terms of the sign ordinance.
Thank you.
Mayor, council and commission, one of the, besides wanting to comply with new law, obviously, and not putting the city at risk, one of the reasons that this is such a priority for staff is back in the spring of 2015, the council had given staff some direction to begin evaluating the sign ordinance in regards to electronic signs, future development signs and directional signs. So we're very cognizant of that and we certainly want to execute in direction with the council's wishes. And so as we move forward in these revisions, we're going to incorporate the electronic signs and these other items. Although I think we talked about future development because we can't regulate, I mean, that's content-based. Under directional signs, we did have a conversation today and we believe, staff believes that we can regulate directional signs, although you have to read it to know it's telling you to go to a direction. It's in the interest of public health, safety, welfare to have vehicles move out of the travelways, off of roads, truck traffic turning for deliveries. So we do feel confident that we can make some improvements in the directional signage ordinance in accordance with council's previous wishes and we're on solid legal ground.
I'm glad to hear that because I did report one of the signs and I actually got on the wrong side of the road. And it was because of a sign they had in the middle. And, and so it was scary when I all of a sudden was faced with a car facing me. It was like, whoa. So you're right, that is, that's something we definitely need to be looking into. Any more, yes?
I'd like to ask you a question, Mayor. So we're having a discussion tonight and they're going to go have public hearings and work on it. Are we going to have another conversation or are we going to see the final product and then have, I think?
I think you're going to get a little bit more information the next time we get together.
I think so. Good.
Because we don't, you know, when I said we needed a whiteboard, you know, just to draw some things on there, it's kind of like we're, we're keeping it here and we need it, we need some substance to it. So I think that, isn't that what you're looking at? You're taking this out. So why don't you just review that with us?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Steve. You got the schedule? You want to talk to the schedule? So what we're going, yes, yes, ma'am. That's correct. We are going to involve the business community, obviously, very much important. That's why we're working with ECHDEV. And we are not proposing to submit anything to the commission, the business community or the council in a final draft. This is something that needs to be debated.
This has to be a continued conversation.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And it may be worthy of additional work session or two.
Okay, good.
We, that's what we, we don't want to rush it. We want to be responsive to the council, the business community and the commission's direction, but we don't want to rush it either, just to say we did it.
Any other questions? Yes, Ryan?
How are you enforcing the changes now? Are we just business as usual or since the case came down, have you changed the way that the signs are being enforced?
Currently, we haven't changed. It's business as usual currently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, well, we really appreciate, thank you. This was a hard, this was a hard subject and I'm sure that you'll get calls and emails when everybody gets home and puts their head on the pillow and starts thinking about this. You may hear from more of us tomorrow. But, did you have some?
Oh, I wasn't sure that we were done.
We're done, we're done.
Were we, I just was looking at rest of the presentation. Did we hit it all so much that you didn't need to go?
We didn't quite follow our outline in the presentation.
Okay.
But we did talk about comprehensive sign packages. We talked, we talked about the temporary signs, all manners of those, flexibility, quality, reducing clutter, helping our business community. And so we did get some direction, although.
District was the only one that I don't think we hit upon.
What was that, Joanne?
Districts, I think there was a slide on.
I think you hit upon it.
Right. I just wasn't sure if we, any further discussion?
There was one point I'd like to make when we were talking about temporary signs. There's two issues. Temporary signs, currently we don't allow any of the temporary signs in the right-of-way except for, there's two exceptions. Our signs, which would include the kiosks, which are directional signs and, you know, our traffic control signs, that sort of thing. And that was governmental signs were specifically kind of culled out from, from the Reed case. The other exception we have is when there are, it's almost like a variance process. When somebody doesn't have access to signage because of some conditions that they really aren't responsible for creating and so they don't have access to the frontage where they normally would, would get a monument sign, we've entered into licenses that would allow that. An example would be down, and it never came to fruition, but we were looking at a license for a business down, I think it was on Camelback off of Litchfield where the big canals are, the big drainage channels. And so we own so much of that right-of-way that they're so far removed from, from the right-of-way that they need to put in on our property in order to really have any visibility from the roadway. So it's under a variance, so there's standard criteria that applies to everybody. But the other issue is do we want to allow, because you can allow temporary signs within a property, or do we want to continue keeping temporary signs out of the right-of-way? So all those signs that we showed you, those were all within the right-of-way. And technically under the code, those all would be violating the code. So you could have signage, you could, you know, distinguish between temporary signs within somebody's property and then temporary signs within the right-of-way. And that's another thing that you might want to toss about right now, is how do you feel like, you're talking about the directional signs inside somebody's property. Well, the community association should be able to monitor that, but that's one of the other issues that we really need some direction on. Inside the right-of-way, do we want to keep where we're at or allow certain types of signs within the right-of-way? And then what you're willing to allow outside of, inside a private property.
Joanne?
And I apologize, my question is not to what you were just stating, Sarah, but one thing that I forgot to mention that I would like you to look at for the discussion is that currently, inner pads, whether in shopping centers, wherever, within centers, I'm not talking about multi-tenant areas, inner pads are not allowed to have their own monuments. They've purchased that pad from the development within there and they're not allowed to have a monument sign. And that, I believe, should be a topic of discussion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Joe?
Just to follow up on the right-of-way signs. On the right-of-way signs, if you eliminate them altogether, if they have state or county or whatever elections, that means no signs in the right-of-way?
That's currently what our ordinance provides except for those two exceptions.
What are the exceptions?
Where you get a license and, you know, it's under like a variance-type condition. And the other exception would be governmental signs. We have our own signs and that would include the kiosk signs and those are allowed in the right-of-way.
So all of the state elections, county elections, local elections, signs would not be allowed?
They're not permitted, they're not permitted under our code, although the state prohibits us from picking up the. us from picking up those signs within a certain period of time, they're not permitted within them. So the state would criminalize it if our code enforcement people were to pick them up. But, and, you know, there probably will be a challenge to the, you know, a First Amendment challenge to allow that kind of signage, but that's not our case to make.
But right now, if they were in the right-of-way, state would prevent you from picking them up? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Can I get Ryan? Ryan, go ahead.
And that kind of goes to my point earlier. You had mentioned that, I think, those flag-type signs, whatever, those are in the right-of-way, correct?
The wind sail signs, yes.
We're not quite enforcing evenly as it is, and I don't feel like those signs are, that type of sign currently, as it sits right now, is a big problem. They run them out every couple of months, you know, for a big sale announcement, and then they put them away. The businesses are being responsible. So if we can, you know, develop something that takes that in consideration and then apply enforcement evenly, you know, I think that would, you know, go a long way in this process.
Joy?
I guess the one question I had when it came to especially the political signs within the right-of-ways was actually, it was back to safety and line of sight in driving. I mean, that should account for something, I would think.
The state statute allows us to pick up a sign that creates a visibility problem, so we do have-
So that doesn't go away?
That doesn't go away. We've always had that ability, even under the state statute.
I guess when we look at this, we need to look at an overall picture. Looking down is how cluttered do we want to look? So I think that's another thing. I don't know how we do that, and I don't know how you demonstrate that for us, but if, you know, because you give a permit, a couple of signs, you think it's fine, then the next one, and the next time you look, it really makes the city look not in the, certainly how we want our city to look, so. Did you have a comment on that?
Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
My comment is if we're going to charge a permit fee, let's make it reasonable. We're not out here to make a lot of money. We're here to regulate the signs, so let's not make it fifty, a hundred dollars or something. I mean, we've got to be reasonable about this. Because it's the American way to stick a sign out. It's your business, you know. It's just like campaign signs. Well, we may not like them, and yes, they clutter, but it's the right of the candidate to put the signs out if they get permission of the landowner, or put it in a right-of-way. I mean, you know, I don't want to take on everybody with our sign ordinance, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Mayor, may I go back to Chairman Peters' comment in regards to right-of-way signs for a certain duration seemed to be acceptable? Is that a fair statement? And if it is, are you all supportive of that?
I would agree with that, Mayor.
Counsel? Do you want him to repeat what he said? Does everybody understand what he said?
I'm on board.
We aren't voting, but just if you kind of-
Just direction.
I think it's a good idea. My only question, I keep going back from what you say with the political signs, and then like what Wally's saying about taking on everybody. How do you put a duration, when the state says you can't duration the political signs, but then when the guy over here, we just put the duration on, is going to say, but you didn't for the political signs?
Well-
I just see this like-
And that was discussed by the Supreme Court. I mean, they were not persuaded by the state statute. So I think what we would propose is we're not touching that state statute. I mean, if we get sued over it, we get sued over it, but, you know, we'll bring in the state and let them defend their statute. But I do have to agree with Councilmember Campbell. You know, historically, you have been able to, you know, exercise public forums and, you know, and no one's putting anything in the median, but, you know, adjacent to the sidewalks, you know, doesn't that come within the, you know, First Amendment, political speech type of protections? The court really didn't address that, I mean, other than to say, you know, we don't find that persuasive that the state told you to do that. And so we very well could get that challenge, but that would be a-
Next case to be somebody versus Goodyear, so.
Yes. Yeah, but that would be a very, you know, different case. And so we'll allow, you know, what we would be proposing would be uniformly allowed, and if the signs with, in the right-of-way on campaign, we're not going to touch them. You know, the statute says you don't get to pick them up, and so if somebody wants to sue us for unequal enforcement, we'll address it at, you know, at that time.
What's Gilbert doing, just out of curiosity? What, I assume they have something in place since the case came down against them? They do?
They're catching, they're catching a lot of grief from everybody across the state. I don't know, I mean, they're working on their sign code revisions as well. You know, we are trying to, you know, everybody has structured their sign code a little differently, so we're trying to work on revisions within how we already have it structured, but, you know, modifying it to address the content neutrality, which is, you know, Councilmember Fazilla was like, well, can't we just piggyback on somebody else? And that would be a wholesale change for us. The other thing that we were talking about and, you know, we'd be looking at is we have Prop 203. So if we give something away now and then take it away later, we risk a Prop 203 claim. But one of the things we're looking at is maybe a sunset provision on some of the temporary signs, so that we could see, we could live with it for a while and see how it looks. And if it creates a problem, then, you know, it can, we can allow it to sunset, or we could remove the sunset provision. So that was something we were also talking about, because it's very difficult to understand what you're going to see. And so, you know, that's the difficulty that we have.
And we are going to cause quite a bit of confusion among our businesses at the beginning, and our residents by this, all of a sudden, such a direct change of what we've been doing. Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. We had, one, two, three, four, five topics for this evening, and we've talked about four of those five, so if you can indulge us for just another moment.
Our time is your time. Please finish this.
The last one that we would just like to bring up real quick is off-site. Steve, can you want to go to that? Currently, off-site signs are not allowed by, not prohibited, or excuse me, not permitted by the city, not allowed by the city. And we're looking for a little bit of direction. Is that still a consensus, is that still a good policy statement?
Could you explain to some of the council what that means?
Yes.
Off-site sign is basically almost, the best example's like a billboard. You're advertising a product or a service that doesn't occur on that property. So you would have a sign way over here advertising a business over here. And generally, most codes across the country, that's something that's not permitted, off-site advertising, off-site signage. So that's the way the City of Goodyear, that's where the code currently works, and that is something that, through REED, we found that is something that we feel we can still enforce, that even though it technically is a content-based regulation, because you have to read the sign to know that it's advertising something off-site, we feel the courts gave us enough solid legal groundwork that we can continue to do so if the Council and Commission so wish.
Comments? I'm okay with it unless we find out other cities are having to do it, then we need to be consistent with what other cities do, I think, so we don't get sued. Well, I don't want to get sued, but I, the consistency with other cities, I, we're Goodyear. So I like the idea of using what we need for our city. And so we've always done that, you know, each city is completely different, but I agree with you, Wally, don't want to be sued. But, so, anybody else?
Yeah, I don't-
Jerry?
I've never seen these signs, I don't know what they are.
I don't either, so this might be a stupid question, but when we see stuff like advertising not at our ballpark, but somewhere else that we say ballpark, or we're hanging stuff on the, I don't know, what we're-
On light fingers?
Yeah, on the lights or something. That's not off-site, right? That's government, but-
Yes, ma'am, that would be governmental, so that one's allowed.
Quite frankly, what it is, is you could be saying XYZ company that's located in Scottsdale is putting their sign up in Goodyear somewhere because they've paid a business to put up their sign, and you're taking traffic out of our city to another. I mean, that's exactly what an off-site, you know, type of situation could be.
Well, some off-site is putting on somebody else's property and not asking permission.
Oh, well, no, they could pay a business to put it there.
But that is the, that is the thing on the political signs. If you haven't called the landowner, or the realtor, or whatever, and gotten permission, you can't put that sign up there. So I, and I think that's a good rule.
So what about all the real estate signs? On Sunday, you see all of these signs up that says Campbell Homes. No, not open house. They'll say Campbell Homes. And you go down a little bit further, and it'll say something. They're on the side of the road, there's just one right after the other.
That would be right-of-way signs.
Right-of-ways, they can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, if they took that back into a lot, an empty lot, San Litchfield, you know, and set it on that-
Correct.
And that's how it would be an off-site.
Yeah. I learned that because when I first ran, I put a sign out on a property, and the next thing I knew, I had a police officer there. And let me tell you, I moved right away. I didn't understand that I was breaking the law. So, yeah, so that does happen. All right, what else we got left there?
You mentioned district. I don't know, there's nothing in here that says district.
No, it doesn't, because this is something we've been talking internally about.
There is in here? I didn't see it. Is there district in your slide presentation? Where is it?
It's at the end. What we're referring to is the entertainment district-
In your district.
-around the mall area, where the previous discussion in the spring was electronic message, messaging could be appropriate there.
But that sends a whole new message when you're doing a regional shopping center, or you're doing an entertainment center, or you think, I mean, you can segregate that from all the others, and I think people would look at that in a reasonable way. What the courts are going to look at, I don't know, but I think people would, so.
We have to provide the appropriate justification to treat similarly situated properties differently, but there is a way in which we can do that.
Okay.
We talked about that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, we appreciate your time. We will be back before you. As you can tell, it is just shy of a Herculean task, but it's one that your staff is looking forward to, to advance this issue, because it's important. We don't want the city to get sued, and we want to build some flexibility in for our business community and-
We want the city to look nice, too.
And maintain a quality city.
And pride ourselves in the way our city looks.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you have information, or will you have conversations that you've had with the business community, i.e. a developer that's developing large space? Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, and we will also let the Council and the Commission know as we approach our open houses, when those will be, we'll be advertising that, so.
All right, great. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and it was a difficult subject matter, but we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to take a break, okay, before we go into the next one. So I'm going to give you 10 minutes break, or, why don't we make it 15 minutes? It's an awful lot of people here to use the facility, so 15 minutes from now, we'll come back to the table.
We look at the policy guidance questions that we provided you, and looking at some of those complexities.
And just one point of clarification, when we talked about the quartile one and two spending, I think you said 23%, but you meant two-thirds of the budget. So just in context, validating that the majority of our budget-
Majority of our spending and the majority of our time is within the most relevant programs to our strategic goals and objectives.
So we are using that, the PBB programs that have been identified, and also leveraging the city stat, so that's the next level down that you see highlighted in red there, to tell us now that we know what our customers would like, what's our mission, how are we supporting that, and the program level of what we're doing to actually carry it out, then our city stat program, which was developed a couple of years ago, really has the data that tells us how we can measure, are we successful at what we're doing? And the city stat program is pretty robust. It's got a lot of measures in it. They're at the strategic level, they are at the customer-focused level, and even a lot of managerial measures that we use in terms of workload activity, that we use, as Christian mentioned, kind of in the supplemental process and planning. What we are using in terms of this value stream model is really those strategic outcome-focused measures. So when we look at a program, how do we know if we are successful from our customer's point of view? Not the level of activity that we're seeing, but in terms of how our customer would define how we're doing. So we're able to leverage what's in the city stat program, which Christian will talk about now. And as he completes that, then I'll walk you through how we've actually taken this concept and applied it to a division in the city to drive performance enhancement.
We created city stat in order to increase accountability to Council, and then also our fellow staff and our citizens. And we want to make sure we're answering the what are we doing, why we do it, and how we do it. We also set goals within this program, and we check up and evaluate them, and we comment on them, we discuss them, and we make improvements to meet our goals and become more efficient. And it's a great tool to really examine the progress that we've made, and really focus on some areas where we may need to devote some extra attention or time to. It's also, you received a report last week with the FY15 of city stat, and that report was really developed to meet the different needs and the different views that might be reading it, whether that be staff, or Council, or citizens. So it's geared to be viewable by multiple, from multiple audience perspectives. It's another tool that we use within Lean, as Kim was saying, to make sure we're measuring those key performance areas, to make sure that the outcomes of our value streams are being met, and help us focus where we need to pay more attention to those areas. And it's really an accountability tool, and helps us track the progress we made, and it's really a baseline as well, you know? If we want to make sizable progress, it really establishes that baseline, so we can see where we've come from and how far we've gone in reaching those goals. And this year, we made a lot of effort to link those city stat measures to our quartile one and quartile two programs, that two-thirds of the budget, not 23% of the budget. We've really worked to link those, because those are the real programs that are strategically significant to the city and really driving those focus areas that you have established. And we're also now including more information in this report, such as benchmarks. And this year will be, is the first year that we've put in Valley Benchmark Cities, because Valley Benchmark Cities has released their first report. So to touch a little bit on that benchmarking, VBC, as we call it, began in October of 2011, and it's a big consortium of 11 largest cities and towns in the valley. And it also includes MAG, ICMA, which is International City and County Managers Association, ICMA, and also the Alliance for Innovation. And the purpose of this group was to make sure that us as a local government consortium can identify common demographic, financial, and performance information. We can look at our data to compare apples to apples, because we're cities that are situated in a like, very similar region. And also, we want to share information and resources and best practices, best practices, learning from one another. And the emphasis of this last fiscal year, FY14-15, has been to capture this benchmarking data in some type of form, because one of our goals was to be sharing and distributing data and showing those best practices. So that's been a goal this year. So we decided to create a report that even a citizen could, of measures that a citizen would be interested in. So we looked at data from the most recently completed fiscal year, at the time FY13-14, over that course of the nine months, to gather that data. So we met with the managers last September, September of 2014, and we talked about some of those measures that were citizen-focused, and we came up with seven areas that we wanted to touch on: fire service, police service, libraries, parks, streets, water, trash, and finance and administration. And we looked to start compiling that data and analyzing that data to make sure that when we're looking at this information, we're looking at it on apples-to-apples comparison. So that's been the, yes?
Christian, so I noticed the 11, I know the next slide shows the 11 cities, and we're
the baby of the group, I believe.
Yes.
So it's by population, correct, within this? And, I mean, you just had said we're trying to look apples-to-apples. I mean, it's good that we can see, because as our growth is going, we can benchmark it to the groups that are already there. But what is Avondale's population? How far below are, I mean, because between Avondale and Surprise, I mean, what, 25,000 people, more or less?
Avondale, within 8,000 people.
Oh, only eight, okay.
Roughly.
Thank you, that's all, I was just curious.
And we do try, we do show the different comparisons, looking at certain, you know, population factors, or not, sometimes it is just the raw data. And there's a, there's a couple of things in the report. We have not only the information, but in some areas, we do have the tables, so you can kind of get a better picture of what some of the complexities are within the data sets. So an example of a part of the data set, you can see the 11 cities here, and Goodyear definitely is the baby of the group, the cool baby of the group. But this one is touching on recycling rate, and I show you this because this information is also captured within city stat. So you can see now one of our city stat measures, which is recycling rate, and look at it on a comparison to our peer communities. And this example, Goodyear does have a higher recycling rate than the average, but it also is the highest amongst this group. So this is one way- So this is one way that the report is laid out with some bar charts that are easily read with, you know, either descending in population or by category of the data set. So that's one example. Another example we can look at is there's some tables and some appendix information. And I pointed out Goodyear here, this would be the typical monthly consumption for a single-family customer. And at the time, Goodyear had 7,000 gallons was our typical. So you can see how we relate to our other 11 cities and by meter size and such, so. Those are just two examples of the way we can look at this data.
And if I may, and we did ask for this slide on here because it's very pertinent to some of today's discussions as it relates to water rates and our IWMP that's coming up. And water conservation, we know, is a key goal of council. In this particular table, it does show Goodyear as the lowest consumption per capita and thought that that was something that was important to point out. Now, the benchmark measures, and you have a copy of that, we didn't go through all of those, mayor and council. There are some areas where we, you know, don't stack up as well and allows us to then look a little deeper into, is that just based on our current growth or size or are there things that we can do to perhaps drive performance?
Joe?
This stat's kind of interesting. I guess the question is, is do we know anything behind the scenes why there's such a big difference in Avondale and Goodyear as far as the average? And then just to plug long-term, we have a lot of right-of-way and maintenance. And I think I raised this one time when we talked about parks, to maybe rethink on how we're going to go ahead and plan the future, our right-of-way and our median strips as far as low water usage, maybe plants or things that don't grow quite as fast, so we're not out there trimming them on a regular basis, that even cuts down water more, you know, on our water usage. So just some fuel for thought as we kind of move forward in that when we talk about conservation, because we have a lot of areas still left to work on. And, you know, remember we had talked about that one where we were talking about people cutting, trimming at the parks and then somebody raking and following? And my question was to follow up, because I know they were working in an area just for the parks, is do we have the right plants? Are they growing too fast? Do we need something that doesn't grow quite as fast, uses less water, which actually brings down our consumption and then also brings down the amount of time that it takes to go through the plant? So these are the kind of things I'm hoping with the stats that you're seeing, and especially when you get in the lean, you just don't broaden it to the one little area, you look at how it all ties into the city where we can push water conservation. Because water's going to keep getting more and more expensive. The longer we can stretch it out, the cheaper it's going to be for us long-term.
And there's a lot of different data and different complexities that go into all these. So in the beginning of each of the sections, we tried to explain some of the components that went into those areas, but definitely after we collect the data, that's when you start to ask these types of questions and wonder why there are differences, so.
And that actually is a really nice segue into what we are looking to do in terms of application of the lean tools when we do recognize an opportunity. And one of the core philosophies, as I mentioned, is how do we create value in our processes? But a lot of the tools that we're teaching in the organization is how to find, once we see the data, what is the root cause? So if we are seeing a performance area where we're not meeting what our targets are, how do we identify what we are doing, what is the root cause of issues? And then how can we be creative and collaborate on solutions to make change? And so I'll talk a little bit about the Public Works Department and the Fleet Division where we have piloted this model and really seen how these tools can be very powerful in terms of driving performance enhancement. And I just want to start out by saying thank you to the Public Works Department and the Fleet team and the folks who have worked on this because as we are learning how to apply the lean tools, a lot of it takes some initiative and willingness to be first out there. So I want to recognize the work that they and the lean trainers have done on this. So we had the Fleet Division here and you'll see at the top, we really start out with who their customers are and what's their mission. And Fleet raised their hand to go first and we appreciate that. But also because they are a very mission-critical internal support department, everything that they do is supporting other departments and you see that reflected in their mission statement where they are looking to provide fully capable, mission-ready equipment at the proper cost. Because all of the work that they do allows our inspectors and our parks workers and our public safety to be out there serving the community. So really starting out with what's their mission. And then you see at the top there, in terms of their value stream, they really boiled it down to three core components of what they do in the Fleet Division to actually make that mission work. And it comes down to equipment management, bulk fuel and management, and equipment maintenance.
Kim, excuse me, they do have this on the backside of the present.
Thank you, Brian. The paper that you have, it has one side, it has the blank model, and then on the other side, it has this, so you can read it a little bit easier. Thank you for reminding me of that. So what we did is we actually, we'll look at the paper. So we have the value stream model and the three bubbles that they identified as their, how do they support the mission? They then took all of their priority-based budgeting programs and linked them to those three value stream components. And you see broken down there, listed by quartile, and it really gives a visual picture of what are the programs that we are delivering that drive results in these key areas. We then have the city stat measures at the bottom of this model. And as mentioned, there are a number of performance measures that they have in the city stat, but the measures that you see reflected here are really outcome-based in terms of how do we know if we're actually supporting this mission in the way that we want to be? And those four measures are really based on equipment availability and the cost of service. And so those measures that are along the bottom are fiscal year 15 targets and actuals. And you'll see what we noticed at the very bottom right corner in terms of the Fleet preventative maintenance measure. Their target was to have 60% of preventative maintenance activities completed in the month that they were due. And in actuality, they were at about 36%. And so that's the power of understanding what is it that we're doing and how do we know if we're successful? Because this then gives us a target to apply the lean tools that we've been teaching to everybody to drive performance enhancement. And so what we did is we actually held something called a kaizen event. And again, that's another lean tool that we are talking about throughout the organization. And it's really focused on how do we bring together that voice of the customer, collaborative skill sets from around the city, to not only map out what is it that we are doing, where's the value from our customers' perspective, where's the waste in our process, but what do we do once we define that? How do we get to the root cause of what's causing these problems? And then actually come up with a solution and make change while we are in this event? There's a lot of flexibility in terms of a kaizen event, and that's a traditional term from the Toyota Production System philosophy and means continuous improvement. And when we mentioned the parks example that was given a couple of months ago, that's something we were calling a kaizen burst. It was a half-day-long, you know, voice of the customer together and solving problems. This is kind of an intense version of that, where we held one in Fleet for four days, did that in June, and it was really focused on this performance measure. How do we look at what the programs are that are driving this performance and solve problems and actually make change? And you'll see on the graphic there, we have the programs identified, the city stat measure, and the visual there is some key results that we achieved in 90 days from the event. So when we first went into this event, we had two key statistics we were looking at. One is the overdue preventative maintenance, so those that were not in compliance. Before we held the kaizen improvement event, we were at 101 overdue preventative maintenance incidents. After 90 days and with some of the changes that we made out of that four-day event, we reduced that by 66%. And that was just within three months. And with just some adjustments to key components of their process that drive performance. And then the bottom row, you see in terms of that city stat measure where our target was 60% and we were at 36% before the event took place, at 90 days out, we were at 68% compliance. So an 88% increase and even above the target. So even to Christian's point about the evolution of our measures, as we're able to perform, we can look at the level of our measures and even increase our targets as we get better in terms of service delivery.
Joe?
That's a significant drop in the preventive maintenance. Explain a little further, what did they do? Because I assume you didn't bring in any more people, so they had the same amount of people. Did they look at some time management? I mean, did they look at, what's the term I'm looking for? Where you process steps and you look at all the steps needed to get something done and you look at the steps that are redundant and you combine those various steps to streamline a process to make it more efficient? How did they go from 101 to 35? And what was that process that got them there?
Yes, thank you. We used exactly the process that you're describing. One of the key tools and where we start is something called process mapping, where we actually go out and observe how the work is taking place. And the team did this collaboratively and then put sticky notes on a piece of paper. We were timing how long things take. We used other tools called, for example, the spaghetti diagram. So when we are watching the mechanics as they do their work, noticing how many times they're walking back and forth, how many times do they do that, how long does it take? So as you described, when we are able to stand back and see from start to finish, we have a very clear picture of what exactly is happening from start to finish to carry out this process, what's valuable from me as a customer bringing my car into the Fleet shop, where were those redundancies, where were we having waste? So the next step after we see the process is to actually go through and identify where's waste in the process. And then applying different tools such as workflow analysis, TAC time, standard work to say, okay, now that we know where the waste is, what can we do within this four days to actually make change and eliminate things? So we changed things such as their workflow and understanding how many times they're walking back and forth to the parts shop as an example. And by implementing a change of bringing a cart and having supplies, what are your standard work that you typically see in a day, bringing those supplies for your standards and making trips to the parts room only for exceptions? We were able to eliminate a significant number of trips that they were making back and forth, thus increasing their capacity to be able to spend working on vehicles. One of the key changes is we, and this was something that really was a collaboration not only with Fleet but also the departments as customers, but implemented a scheduling system. And that way, everybody understood when their vehicles were due, Fleet understood their workflow so they could make sure that they could capture it and build it into their process. So as you said, we were not adding resources, but we were increasing our internal capacity to meet the workload. And that's where, as we continue our maturity in implementing lean, you will really see the difference. When we talk about efficiencies, a lot of our budget, as you are very familiar with, is associated with personnel costs and the costs that go along with supporting the personnel. The power of these tools and applying them to create results like this allows us to enhance our internal capacity to handle the work that's coming our way as we grow. And that's where we're really going to see some of the efficiencies and the power come out of this.
Just follow up.
Yeah, listen, I really appreciate that explanation. I think the tool's very powerful when you map out the actual processes. And just a little side note, I remember once sitting in line at the post office in which it was Christmas time, busy, people are backed up, and I was sitting there watching the individual who was actually taking the certified mail. They take one at a time, walk all the way to the back, get an envelope, come all the way out front. And I'm sitting there looking at this and I'm going, I wonder if anybody took a look at this process? If you had grabbed four or five of them at one time, that line would have shrunk real fast. So I really do appreciate what you're doing and looking at because I think, you know, the personnel is one thing, but if you can streamline the process and bring that and make it much more efficient, and that's what I kind of figured the answer was going to be, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Joanne?
Well, first of all, I love this performance management program. I know that we're only in the second year, but the model seems outstanding. I hope the concept works for us and continues on for quite a few years. My question, as you're going through this, is how, so we're in year two, and I have not gone through this book yet to see the goals and the key indicators that you've had. Are you keeping these goals, these performance measurements, every year for five years, for three years? Are you saying, oh, we met this target, so we don't have to watch it next year, but we didn't on this one, so we're going to focus on this? And then maybe this other one gets lost because, you know, we met it once and then we don't watch it follow through? Do these measurements change every year or do we have an outlook of, we're going to, these are the measurements we're going to watch for the next five years? You know, that's kind of what I'm curious about.
We continue to track the measures, but we do go through the, you know, we go through our measures and some of them we're finding, you know, maybe they're not the most valuable to be measuring. So we look at other areas where we're lacking. And that's one way that looking at our quartile one and two programs have helped us in finding measures that should be tracked. Because if they're really important to the strategic focus areas, we need to be evaluating, looking to see, are we really truly capturing what is driving performance on this, in this particular program? So we do evaluate those. But you'll see some of them we've had in there since 2011, 2012. We have four years of record on them, but we do.
They're so critical that they will always be there to measure.
And what I would, I'm sorry, what I would add to that is, one of the results that we think we're going to get as we take this model, now that we have seen, it shows a very good big-picture look, that as we build this across the departments in the city, we will be able to see, do we have any gaps in our city stat program where maybe we don't have those outcome strategic measures that we want? Or do we have the right ones? So those will evolve. And then in terms of, and I'll take this Fleet example, they are now, with just 90 days out of their event, they're exceeding their target. So that is something where they will be able to take a look at that and say, okay, we've met it, so now it's time to look at, do we bump it up to 70%, 80%? Because the whole philosophy that we're teaching when applying lean is continual improvement. That just because we hit 60 doesn't mean we don't need to look at it anymore. And it was very clear as we went through the event, there's a whole bunch of opportunity. And so we want to continue to build on the success that we've seen and always go back and look at it. And I will tell you, the departments watch these numbers like hawks and, because they really do want to see if the changes that we are making are hitting the target. And one thing I did not touch on but is very important is as we make these changes, we have a 30, 60, 90 check-in. Because sometimes you'll make a change in your process and it does not work like you thought it would. And so the importance there is, as we're making change, we need to hear from the customers, is that working? We need to look at our numbers to say, is it making the change that we expected? And if not, then let's go back and look at another root cause analysis and try something else. And that way, we're building on incremental improvements to actually hit our targets.
Well, I just see, I was quite excited about this when I went through and looked at all the departments and where they are and what they've done. It's just amazing because as on the council, we get comments made from the public about certain things that are going on in the city or how they don't think of something. And I just picked out one of them, weeds compliance. We're at 99%. Do you know how many weed complaints we've gotten? So when you, now you par that down. So for me, this is all, every department's quite emotional as I'm reading one and thinking, whoa, good, good. You know, it's a really good way to look at your city and be able to appreciate it. And then you can later have that conversation with people, well, did you know? And this is the way we do. I know there are some areas, as I went through in some of the departments, that need improvement, but they're going in the right direction. So you're the technical people, but I can tell you just from a layman's reading of this, this was really result, it was exciting. And it's something that I can talk about out in public when we're having these conversations and keep the negativity out and bring the positive in and see where the city. So I thank all the staff. I mean, it was tedious, I can see that. But the end result at this point is just marvelous and we know it's just going to get better because you're trying to refine it to the point it is, so. And this should help us also with budgeting. There's no question in my mind now. You can look at things that and it kind of defines where you should be, what you need. And so, thank you.
And I'll just give a couple other quick examples, and then we'll talk about kind of where we're going from here. We did host a kaizen in August in the parks department. And you'll see there, in terms of the city stat program and the priority-based budgeting programs that we were looking at. And it was really focused around their standard of care measure, which they have a target of parks, you know, they have the park audit where they have a very detailed scoring system that tells us how they look in terms of standard of care. And their target is 90%, and they are at 85% right now. So again, kind of looking at, okay, we're not hitting our target, let's go and look at what's causing that. And it was quite exciting. They really honed in on their mobilization process in terms of their crews and how they go out each day. And again, you see on the graphic here, we did do that time analysis study of how long does it take them to actually mobilize in the morning to get out into the parks? And on average, it's about 45 minutes each day. And so during the event, really looking at what's causing that, you know, there were some standard work that needed to be created, there was physical lot mobilization that we looked at. And we were able to, again, experiment with that in the four days and make some physical changes to their work process, and were able to reduce that by over 50% and got it down to 20 minutes in the morning. And when you look at the impact that that has on an annual basis, that increased our internal capacity by 1,300 hours. That's 1,300 more hours that those crews are spending out working in the parks. And again, we'll have that 30, 60, 90 check-in. We're coming up on our 60-day check-in, and then we will reevaluate our standard of care and see if we're getting the results. But it's quite amazing when you have the collaboration, not only of the parks crews that are doing this work every day, but across the organization that either do similar work or have outside eyes, to really come up with some creative solutions. You do not always have to have a kaizen event to actually apply these tools. We have several work groups around the city, and I highlighted one on the slide here, that are actually taking the tools that they're being taught and looking at process improvement. Here, you see the high utility consumption questions that we get on a fairly regular basis, people calling in, and how long, what's the process look like from our customers' perspective in order to get that resolved? And it takes on average about four days to get something resolved through our process, whatever the resolution is going to be. And so again, we have that cross-functional team, because it's impacted not only by finance, but also public works. And looking at, how can we streamline that, reduce some of those redundancies, so in our customers' perspective, they are receiving the best value. And then also, it's increasing our capacity to handle those types of calls as they come in. So it can be done during an event. There can be cross-functional teams that are applying these tools to identify opportunities as well.
Joe? Again, I really appreciate taking a hard look at the processes, finding the extra time, because as the mayor had mentioned, I think the budget time, when they're asking to expand, this is where this is going to have some tremendous value. The only thing I ask, as Ed mentioned earlier, to try to maybe think a little bit outside just the mobilization, but also look at the type of plants, the type of water use. Is there a way that we can slow the growth and still have the pretty colors? Because the plants now require less water, which saves us as far as conservation, which requires less time as far as growth, more time, you know, they have on spending others. Just other ways, other than just the process itself, the actual plant material that we use that can maybe slow some of that process down. Even when we're looking at some of the medians, when you pull out in front of some of the medians, you know, some of the plants I just see throughout the city, it's like, I don't know what they were thinking when they put that out, fast-growing, they got to come out there and trim them, because you can't see around the bends on some of them. Take a look at some of that to maybe be able to slow down the timeline, the actual crews have to be out there, because we've got slow-growing, still pretty plants, use less water, don't grow quite as fast, so they're not out there as often. So just a thought besides the process. But I do appreciate this effort, and I think it's going to come in handy when it comes to budget time to figure out, especially asking for additional funds. You know, you found a process where you freed up all these hours, you're going to use that for the additional demand they have. So again, thank you.
Jerry?
I just want to thank you both and all the staff for all the hard work, because this is just really phenomenal. It's very detailed, it's very technical, and it gives just overwhelming amounts of information, which is wonderful. If there's any way we could get out this to the public in small bites, like a tweet or something that says mobilization time, like explain that, under this program, we've saved 1,300, that's 32 weeks, or if we could get something out, because this is a lot to take in, but there's so much good information buried. Maybe if we could just kind of let the public know in general, not so technical what it is, I think that'd be great, because there's so much good stuff. You're saving a lot of money here for the citizens, and I wish they could know it all.
Yeah, I used it in a couple speeches that have been out, but it didn't, I didn't have what I've read in this. I didn't have the excitement part, you know, you can explain what we're doing. But the end result, and you have enough results in this, that makes an exciting story to tell. And I just think you made our job as council much easier, much easier when the budget time comes and making decisions. We have something that we can really look at and understand.
One note, as we lead into next steps, you know, we talk a lot about the culture of the organization and team building and focusing on our customer and customer service. And it's something that you can't really put in a statistic on the slide, but I will say, it's really amazing when you see the departments coming together, sharing their knowledge, understanding what it takes to get each other's jobs done and problem-solving together. The focus on why we all come to work every day, it's really amazing when you see that element come from this initiative in terms of our performance management.
There's nothing better than knowing you're doing a great job and being able to see that you are and that, have that feeling, so.
The next steps, touching on that culture more. Culture isn't built overnight, so from day one, we're trying to engrain this culture of lean and innovation and trying new things. And that starts with our Goodyear employee orientation process. And to touch on that just do it attitude, I'll never forget when Brian Dahlke sent out an email to us as employees the first weekend, said, I want to empower and engage you to try new things and to be innovative and to just do it. So I think that's the culture we're really trying to build as an organization, so that lean really can infiltrate our organization and make some critical changes. We're also updating the tools, and staff is analyzing, as you saw, we have gone through our measures after this fiscal year, and we do that on a quarterly basis. And then again, as you give us input on suggested changes to the strategic action plan, we'll be implementing those within the tools that we have. And then PBB, again, is a budgeting supplemental process. Speaking of the public, city stat is available on the portal for our, sorry, the public-facing website, FY16 is. And we're going to also be publishing the FY15 version. We've tried to add a few new features, like a dashboard, so that public, if they have 30 seconds to look at it, they can get a quick glance. So we're constantly trying to change it up a little bit to make it more user-friendly to the different audiences, whether that's staff or council or the public. So we'll continue to look at doing so. And then that data really does assist staff in our daily operations, as Kim touched on a lot, with the fleet, being able to open up and have some documentation and a starting point, when you're looking at, where should we start focusing some time and process mapping or whatnot. We have some data that can help us in that process, and some measures and key performance indicators. And then staff is really using, it's awesome that we're able to use these tools to really activate our performance management program and show us where these links and really critical ties are. So those are the steps we're really working on right now. And then again, having Valley Benchmark Cities and other agencies, and ICMA is our resource in order for us to look at, you know, what are other cities or organizations doing to improve their process, and then ask those really critical questions, like, why are we above the curve? Or why are we, what areas do we need to focus in on to move the needle a little bit? So that's pretty awesome about that.
And then in terms of the lean initiative and really integrating that into our day-to-day work, we are undergoing a process right now. We were selected to have free mentoring by Intel through the Southwest Alliance for Excellence. And of course, Intel's had lean integrated into their operation for a couple of decades. And so they are working with us on a lean organizational assessment. There's many components, as you can imagine, as we are just scratching the surface with some of the work that we're doing right now. And so really kind of giving us the ability to look at the big picture of what does it take to further integrate this, and where should we be focusing our time? So for example, the value stream model that we've developed, we've seen the power of it, the storytelling that can happen, and how it gives us some focus. And so that'll be an area that we're focusing on with the departments over the next year, along with continuing to look at, you know, some of these additional kaizen events, and looking at process improvement and creative problem-solving. We also are really excited, getting the organization through that initial training. It's really putting the employees who are out there doing the work in that empowered state to say, you are out there, you're hearing from the customers, you're out there working with people, and you see the opportunities that exist. Let's help you use the lean tools that we've been teaching you to actually make changes. So it's an exciting time, and we look forward to continuing to provide you with updates on this.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from anybody?
I just agree with everything all of y'all said.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want to say, Brian, it's under your management, and thank you very much. And at another time, you can point out all the other directors and people who have been exceptional during this process. But this is really exciting. As exciting as reading a novel, I have to tell you. It was, so I thank you very much. Okay, then this ends our meeting tonight, but I do want to remind you, the future meetings, you can't, regular meeting be on October 26th, and then a work session on November, and a regular meeting November 9. So with that meeting.
So Mayor?
Yes.
Before you do, I have an inquiry to the city manager.
Sorry.
This coming Saturday, we have two huge, huge city events scheduled. I would hope that in going forward, we would not have two on the same day, like Make a Difference Day and then the festival.
Well, first of all.
I know the Make a Difference Day historically has been the fourth Saturday of the month, but as a city, we can move it, and we can move the Fall Festival. But it's just for the folks that are out and going to do these projects, it's going to be hard for them. They're going to be tired, number one, and I would like to see them at the festival, because it's such a wonderful event. And that's all I'm going to say. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead, Brian.
Mayor and council, just a couple of things. One, a reminder, I know you all know this, this is for the public's benefit. Tomorrow night is our first State of the City update. So Mayor Lord gets to, will be delivering the inaugural Goodyear State of the City address. This is at Desert Edge High School Performing Arts Center. The event is at 6:00 PM. And we are asking our citizens to register in advance, and of those, we have 115 attendees that have registered. Now, we don't know what the rain is going to do, but, you know, we're, we've tried to plug into the chamber and others that may be able to influence the weather.
[laughing]
Reception afterwards will really is important as well. It'll give us a chance to interact with our citizens, whether it be at some of our information booths, et cetera. So it will go until 8:00 PM. Another item is the 2015 Shop Goodyear campaign started today, and it goes through the end of this calendar year, December 31st. So the program, we have 22 sponsors, offered more than $6,000 in prizes. I mean, this is a good, really a good turnout. We've tried to improve it this year with the duration that we'll be having the campaign. So you'll see a lot of information on this over the next several weeks, whether it's in focus, social media, website, and water bill inserts. 27 locations around the city, that's where sponsoring businesses and other city locations, like City Hall and Parks and Rec, that's where you can drop off your receipts into those ballot boxes. And, you know, thank you, Osborne Jewellers is our grand prize again this year. And also, if you have questions, Michelle Laurie can answer those. The last thing is, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and just, it can affect, as we know, unfortunately, anyone. It doesn't matter what race, religion, economic status, age, or gender. And according to the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence, estimated that over 800,000 women and 400,000 men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. Very sobering fact. And in 2013, 125 people were killed through domestic violence-related homicides. So what we're doing is, in an effort to really honor the domestic violence victims and really raise the awareness for this, our Goodyear Police Department has partnered with Eve's Place, which is a local community outreach program. So for the month of October, our officers are encouraged to wear purple, so if you see that, recognize that, and thank them. So you wear purple ribbon pins on their uniforms. And also, domestic violence awareness t-shirts provided by Eve's Place will be displayed in the lobby of the Police Department to educate those about the dangers to domestic violence. So that's the outreach that we're doing this month. Thank you, Mayor, that's all.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much, and we'll be seeing each other in October, later October, all right? Meeting adjourned.